We are live, but we can give Mr. Bill a moment. Let me check my emails to see if he's having connection issues.
And I see him logging on right now, so. We will, we will kick off tonight is Tuesday, June 2nd, and this is the regularly scheduled Montrose City Council meeting. And the first item on our meeting as always is the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, our youth council member Gunnison Clamp will be leading everyone in the Pledge of Allegiance once the flag is on our screen. Okay, Gunnison, take it away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And I will now turn it over to Lisa Del Piccolo, our city clerk, for a roll call.
Barbara Bynum?
Present.
Doug Glassbell?
Present.
Roy Anderson?
Present.
Dave Bowman?
Present.
Dave Frank?
Present.
Gunnison Clamp?
Present.
All city council, all city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
Great, thank you very much. I would ask Mayor Pro Tem Doug Glassbell if there are any changes to tonight's agenda.
Not that I'm aware of, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. So the first item on our agenda is the call for a public comment, and it's a little bit difficult over Zoom, but I will ask if there are any, any members of our public who have either sent an email to our city clerk or who are in attendance. I see a hand going up. And so what I'll do is I'm going to read this first before calling on Rhonda Davidson. The call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or racial or gender oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law and shall not be permitted. In other words, this is a great time to tell city councils what's on your mind, but because it's actually not on our agenda, we won't, we won't find ourselves perhaps answering your question or talking back and forth with you. But if we need to get back to you with some follow-up information, someone from council, myself, or city staff will follow up with you. And we limit comments to three minutes. And we always start by having you introduce yourself. And also, we need your address for the record. Doesn't matter if you live in the city or the county, we just need your address for the record. So with that, Rhonda Davidson.
Can you hear me?
Absolutely. Welcome to city council. What's on your mind tonight?
Thank you so much. Well, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have prepared a short statement, it's about three minutes long, so I'll just read it, if that's okay, for the record.
Great.
I am here to voice my informed opinion in opposition to the city mandated requirement to wear face masks in restaurants stated in bullet point four on the May 24, 2020 variance. The use of face masks is not an effective measure to prevent virus transmission, so they are of no benefit in public settings. However, face masks do provide a warm, moist surface for bacteria and viruses to grow on and become more concentrated. People who wear face masks in public touch their faces much more often than people not wearing masks. This has been reported in many sources, but you can verify it through your own observations, as I have. People pull their warm, moist masks up and down and adjust them frequently, all without ever sanitizing hands in between. A 2016 study in the Journal of Exposure and Science and Environmental Epidemiology found that typical masks do not screen particles less than 2.5 micrometers in size. As referenced in the New England Journal of Medicine, the size of coronavirus particles varies between 0.06 micrometers and 0.14 micrometers. Therefore, the average virus particle is 25 times too small to be screened by the typical mask. The World Health Organization rollout of recommendations on January 29 of this year warns against wearing masks in community settings because of a lack of supporting scientific evidence and the potential for increasing disease transmission through their improper use. Eli Perensikvik, professor of medicine and epidemiology at the University of Iowa College of Medicine, stated the following, and I quote, "I've never seen a person practice hand hygiene before removing a mask in public and then after removing the masks. They wear them incorrectly and they can increase the risk of infection because they're touching their face more often," unquote. I strongly encourage the Montrose City Council to amend the variants, and instead, you can encourage all businesses, including restaurants, to use their own professional and industry training, educated judgment and creativity to keep their patrons safe, which logically is the top priority for all businesses to be successful going forward. Mandating a policy that the WHO and other medical experts say may increase the risk of disease transmission is unwise. I think it could even create legal liabilities for city government and council members. Though the idea was undoubtedly well motivated, you can act to correct this mistake and therefore prevent unintended negative consequences. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate them. We always like to hear what's on our, our citizens' mind. And because that variance was signed by the city, but it's really the county's variance, I would hope that you also would take the time to make sure that our county commissioners hear your concerns as well. So, thank you very much. I appreciate you coming to our city council meeting. And we are going to go ahead. Is there any other call for public comment tonight? Okay, great. I want to make sure, wait, someone told me I didn't give their enough time to raise their hand or unmute their button. Okay. Seeing none, we will continue to agenda item six, which is approval of minutes. And this is our council consideration of the minutes of the May 13, 2020 special city council meeting and the May 19 regular city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 13 special meeting and the May 19 regular city council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Great, we have a motion by Counselor Glassbell and a second by Counselor Frank. I'll ask Lisa Del Piccolo to take a roll call vote. You're muted, but I know my name is first, so I'll say aye.
Thank you. Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much. Our minutes from those two meetings are officially approved and will be posted on our website. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is item seven, which is the City of Montrose Youth City Council Manual Updates. And I'm excited to turn it over to our two youth council coordinators, Michaela Anru and Kaylee Rivenberg.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much. And so as Mayor Bynum mentioned, tonight we have before you the final edits to our Youth City Council manual. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you now and will quickly run through those changes before it goes to you for formal approval. All right, can everyone see that? Excellent. So as I mentioned at our work session before, most of the changes to the manual were to clean up the language present and help it to reflect current youth council practices. So one of the first major changes that you'll see in our manual here is to our role of the youth city council. So we expanded this section to include their attendance at a variety of city events and really to reflect that increased engagement in the community that we've been so excited to see from our council over the past few years. Next, we'll go ahead and move into the membership and recruiting section of the manual. Again, a lot of the changes made in this section were just to reflect some cleanup and the ongoing practices of membership and recruitment. But we did add in there that addition that all youth city councilors must attend at least two city events throughout their term, as we really felt it was necessary to help them engage more with the community there. And we do also touch on between this section here and moving forward, our youth city council absence policy. So this was something that we did decide to maintain from the original manual and that all youth city councilors are only allowed to miss four meetings in a term. And we did keep that just the same despite the fact that we've increased our meeting frequency to actually once a week rather than bi-weekly. So now I will turn it over to Kaylee here to give us a little update on the roles and responsibilities.
Thank you, Michaela. So we are going to be keeping the mayor and secretary positions, but what we do would like, or what we would like to add is the mayor pro tem position, public information officer, and our treasurer. And then if we go down to that next section for projects and project leaders, the only change we would like to do is instead of picking project leaders at the beginning of the term, we would like to pick the leaders throughout the term based on what projects arise. And then with that, I'll give it back to Michaela for meetings.
Excellent. So as I mentioned, and we did update that meeting absence policy, the only other major changes we made to this section was to update the youth city council meeting location. So rather than council chambers, the group has decided they like meeting in the centennial meeting room. And we did increase the meeting time to reflect that accuracy of weekly. We also updated the annual retreat information to accurately reflect that that retreat occurs at the beginning of the year and is an opportunity for our council to meet the city council members and discuss those goals with one another. And now I will turn it back to Kaylee to discuss the scholarship program.
Thank you, Michaela. So the only change that we have for the scholarship program is that we are making the end term date June 1st. And then the word, we would like to add that third bullet, which Michaela had stated earlier, that we would like them to attend at least two city events. But for mayor and mayor pro tem, we had upped that to four since they are the leaders of the group. And with that, we're open to answer any questions you may have for us.
You guys did a fantastic job. Wow, I'm really impressed. Do my fellow councilors have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I think it looks great.
Looks very professional.
Great job.
Great, fantastic. Um, I will also accept public comment if there is any public comment about this. Well, you guys did a fantastic job, and I can't tell you how proud council is of our youth councilors. And I'm excited tonight that not only is Gunnison Clamp our official youth council representative, but we're also joined by youth council representative Harrison Hall. I know that coming to our meetings during the summer is like bonus. You guys should get extra credit or something, so thank you very much for being here. Do either of you have any comments about this or any concerns or questions that you guys see?
Here, I just wanted to say it just, it's, the new manual is very up to date. It's very, it's been customized and built for how we're operating now because like Michaela and Kaylee were saying, you know, we changed some stuff pretty significantly this year, including mainly our meeting frequency. And all, everything in the new manual reflects that all so well, and it's just really clear. And yeah, I'm really pleased with how the, the manual came out this year, so.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate it. And did you guys both, Harrison and Gunnison, did you guys both just finish your sophomore year? So you're both be juniors? Do we have, do we get a few more years of your service on city council? Fantastic. Then you guys may see, you guys may be around long enough to see an update. And you guys can say, oh, I remember when we put this together and now we can see why it needs to be updated. So that's fantastic. It looks like we are going to actually officially approve this manual, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the updates to the city's youth council manual as presented.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I second it.
No, no worries. We have a motion by Counsel Frank and a second by Counsel Anderson. I will turn it over to Lisa Del Piccolo to take a roll call vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. The next thing on our agenda is Resolution 2020-09, which is council consideration of setting July 7, 2020 as the hearing date for the annexation of the Hilltop Edition. And I will turn it over to senior planner Amy Sharp.
Hello, and thank you very much. I'm going to share my screen here, just a moment. Okay, are you able to see that? Okay? No? How about now?
Not yet. Now we can see it.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to provide a brief overview of our schedule for the annexation. We had the council work session overview on May 18th. And then tonight is the resolution to set a hearing date. On June 10th, we will have a planning commission zoning hearing. On June 17th, the annexation impact report filing deadline to Montrose County will be due. And on July 7th, we anticipate the city council annexation hearing as well as the first reading of the annexation ordinance and the first reading of the zoning ordinance. And then on July 21st would be the second reading of the annexation and zoning ordinances. This is next, this first map is a vicinity map to show you the location of the proposed annexation. It is located north of Locust Road and in between County Road 6650 Road and 6600 Road. So the parcel is approximately 15.75 acres in size. And this zoomed in map gives you a little bit better ideas to the location of that. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the tri-county water service area and the city of Montrose service area. The city-county IGA gives the city the option to annex properties within the IGA. The area is urbanizing and more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to the city limits, and these factors support annexation. The owner of this parcel would like to develop a senior living community with approximately 125 townhome units, which is why they are proposing to annex. And as I mentioned, the next steps will be the June 10th Planning Commission zoning hearing and an annexation agreement will be needed on this project as it is over 10 acres in size. That's all I have. Any questions?
It looks like Doug, you have a question, but you're muted.
As far as 6600 Road goes, that will stay County Road?
It'll be annexed as well, a portion of it as well as the rideaway.
Okay, good. I noticed.
That'll be part of the annexation agreement.
That was just recently paved. I just wondered if the county knew this was going on.
Yeah, we've been discussing that as well.
Okay, does any, look, Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, just to be clear, this is an annexation that was requested by the landowner, correct, Amy?
Correct.
Thank you.
Do any other councilors have any comments or questions, youth council included?
I might just ask one. With the kind of development he's wanting to put in, has there been any discussion about old points transit servicing this area?
There's not been any discussion on that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions about this schedule? And okay, then it looks like we are considering, we're making a motion tonight, and we are also accepting public comment. Counsel Frank?
Just as a clarification, this resolution is just to set the hearing date. This is not a hearing, uh, setting anything specific to the annexation. This is just to set the hearing date for the planning commission.
Correct.
Okay, so is there any public comment about our decision to set a date for another committee to meet, to talk about this? Okay, I don't see any public comment on that, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-09 as presented.
I'll second that.
Great, we have a first and a second, and I will ask Lisa Del Piccolo to call for a vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Great, thank you very much. We'll move on now to item nine on our agenda, which is Resolution 2020-10, which is council consideration of a resolution to set July 7, 2020 as the hearing date for the annexation of the River Crossing Edition. Again, senior planner Amy Sharp.
Thank you again. Are you able to see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. So this one is identical to the last one, but I'm going to review it again just for the project record. We had the council work session overview for the River Crossing Edition on May 18th. Tonight, we'll be doing the resolution just to set a hearing date. On June 10th, the Planning Commission zoning hearing will take place. On June 17th, the annexation impact report will be due to the county. On July 7th will be the city council annexation hearing, the first reading of the annexation ordinance and the first reading of the zoning ordinance. And then on July 21st would be the second reading of the annexation and zoning ordinances. This map shows the general vicinity of the River Crossing Edition as identified in this orange block. The River Crossing Edition is located west of South Townsend Avenue, and it's between Ogden Road and South Rio Grande Avenue, as shown on this map. The area is approximately 36.33 acres in size. So the property is within the city's urban growth boundary, the city water service area and the city sewer service area. The city-county IGA gives the city the option to annex properties within the IGA. The area is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to city limits, and these factors support annexation. The owner of this property would like to develop residential multifamily units and general commercial retail in this area. The owner would like to annex in order to connect to city utilities. The next step will be the June 10th Planning Commission zoning hearing to recommend a zoning for this parcel. An annexation agreement is also needed on this parcel since it is over 10 acres in size. That's all I have. Have any questions on this one?
Great, thank you very much, Amy Sharp. Any questions for my fellow councilors? Counsel Anderson has a question.
Yeah, um, the diagram that you showed made it appear that the property goes right up to the edge of the river. And I wondered if there is any city access along the river that, that people can be fishing and stuff and not, uh, you go on private property. So I just wonder how close it gets to the river and what the status is there.
I think I'll refer to Scott for this one because he knows this one in real detail about the trail system and everything there.
Yeah, I think right, a lot of that property is private property. We have the trail easement for the crusher finds trail on the bridge that goes across there that was granted by, I think it was brands come back in the day. Indeed, over to the city. So we have right for all that trail network. But right now, the river itself is technically private property. So people can boat through it as long as they're passing through. Wade and fish on the private property would be trespassing at this point. As it develops, occurs, they would be, we would be working with them to try and improve that as possible to, for use of the public.
Counselor Frank has a question?
Is there a possibility of including a recreation easement into this project as we're going through this annexation process?
Yep, yeah, and that's, that language is actually already in the draft annexation agreement. I don't know the status of that at this point, but that is one of the things we're asking for in the annexation. Is that correct, Amy?
It is, and I'm still working on reviewing that with Bill and hope to have that done sometime this week, so. But yes, it's included in the annexation agreement.
I think that, I would think that would be important to the city who has tried to make sure that any, any of the city, any land where the river goes through city, things that are in the city have access to, to fishing and recreating on the river without trust tracing.
Correct.
Fellow councilors have any additional comments or questions? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Glassbell?
Right, Amy. If I was looking at that correctly, there's still a piece of property to the east of this area that is in the county. Is that true?
Little piece. It must belong to somebody else.
Let me check, just a moment.
And yeah, to your point, Robert, this annexation does include the whole of that, the property that is being considered. See, if it is, it would be a different.
A different owner? It's a different parcel?
Yeah, I see which one you're talking about. It is correct. That's a different private owner.
So this owner hasn't carved out a piece that just, it's a different parcel altogether with a different owner?
It is. They've also contacted me in regards to this one as a potential annexation in the future, but that will be a different subject for a different day.
A whole different resolution. Any other comments or questions from fellow councilors, including youth councilors on this? Okay, then I will turn over to public comment. We did receive an email comment, and I think, so that the record is completely transparent and everything, I will read this letter into the record. It's not that long. It comes from Joel Evans at 2754 Stellar Court, Montrose. Regarding the current consideration for the annexation of the River Crossing Edition, I noticed the property is adjacent to the Uncompadre River and has significant river footage. As this property is being considered for annexation, I would like the city council to fully consider public access to the river as a condition of annexation. I'm uncertain what the legalities are, but as other past river frontage locations have been developed, access has been a part of the discussion as to foot access and bike paths. Riparian zones and wetlands also need to be considered. The Uncompadre River Master Plan addresses these considerations in general. As a community, we have accomplished much in the last decade as to the physical improvements of, and public accessibility to the river. Each piece adds up to improve a unique resource we have in that few other towns have a quality river running through town. This is one small but significant piece of the total vision for the Uncompadre River within Montrose and beyond. It sounds like our citizens are thinking along the same lines as we are, so excellent point. Are there any additional public? Are there any additional public comments? I don't see any, so, um, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash ten as presented.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Mr. Piccolo, will you please take a roll call vote?
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Ray Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda tonight is item ten, which is the Westco amended and restated intergovernmental agreement. It is the city council consideration of an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement concerning the establishment of the Western Colorado Regional Dispatch Center, providing emergency dispatch services throughout Western Colorado. And at this point, I will turn it over to Police Chief Blaine Hall.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, I couldn't have said that better myself. So, uh, this amended agreement includes a, a couple of changes. Um, I apologize that, uh, this agreement really is coming a little bit late, uh, to all of you. Uh, the, this agreement was ratified or was presented, um, at the end of last year, and, uh, things have gotten a little busy, so I'm just now getting this to you. Uh, there are really essentially, uh, two main changes, uh, from the former agreement. Uh, the first being the inclusion of the Montrose County Sheriff's Department as a member, uh, in Wesco, and then also the Uray County Agencies, uh, to include the Uray County Sheriff's Office, the Town of Ridgeway, and the city of, of Uray. Uh, this, uh, new amended agreement was also meant to add some language as far as payment uh, to, uh, Wesco, and it just simply, uh, added a line that stated that, uh, quarterly payments will be remanded to Wesco, um, every year, uh, for a total of four payments. So with that, um, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council, including youth council? No. Is that, yeah, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, to double check with you, Chief Hall, that this doesn't really add any additional responsibilities that didn't exist before to the, the city in particular. Um, any additional costs or, or anything of that nature.
So, yes, um, today it doesn't add any additional costs to the city of Montrose, but we did, uh, actually today have a, uh, a meeting with the Wesco Director. And so as part of two A, uh, we will be adding more police officers. And, uh, when Wesco bills not just the city of Montrose, but all agencies, it's based really on a three-year average of usage. And so you can imagine that as we add more police officers, and as we become more proactive, uh, there will be more usage, uh, for, for Wesco. And so as a result of that, I do anticipate that, um, you know, over the next, uh, several years, um, that average, uh, will increase, and so our dispatch bill will, will go up. Um, but those additional monies will come out of the Public Safety Fund and two A.
But that's not a change or result of this particular agreement. That's just a fact of the expenses we incur as our police force grows.
Correct, correct. This particular agreement, um, honestly doesn't change anything for the city of Montrose. It's just that we had to have a new agreement because, uh, Wesco incorporated some new agencies that they're now servicing.
Perfect, thanks. That's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you.
Chief, would you say that there's been some benefit to the city and to our city officers by having both the sheriff's office and the city being dispatched by the same agency?
Yeah, no, it's, it's been excellent. Um, it increases our communication. Um, it also gives us access to the sheriff's department's booking photos because, uh, we are on the same server. So it's a very, very good thing, and it's good for, um, both officer and public safety.
Any other, uh, comments or questions about this? Okay, any public comment about this item on our agenda tonight? I don't see anyone raising their hand, um, which is the best way to let us know if you're in the public and you want to make a comment. So seeing none, um, we can, uh, consider a motion.
I move to approve the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much for that first and that second. I'll ask Mr. Piccolo to take a roll call vote.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Roy Anderson?
Aye.
Dave Bowman?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much for that. Um, that is the end of, um, the, the items we're considering and voting on tonight. So the next thing on our agenda, we go to item eleven, which is staff reports. Um, and then the first understaff report is a public information report, and I'll ask City Manager Bill Bell to take over.
I don't have anything in particular, uh, unless department heads do. Uh, it seems like we talked about the same things every meeting nowadays. Uh, we've been working on trying to expand the outdoor seating for our businesses and, and worked through that process with, uh, the Office of Business and Tourism Representatives, as well as Sue Hanson from the County Commission and the Ambassador Group. And, uh, just trying to get feedback from the restaurants and, and, uh, other businesses in our community on how we can help them and how we can, uh, walk them through processes to be a little more effective under the guidelines that seem to be changing on a daily basis. A new set of guidelines came out again today. So we've just been trying to keep up with that. We had a little period between the beginning of COVID and now what seems like the next phase of the COVID response, which is recovery. Uh, seems like every few days we're getting, uh, held guidance on how to do that, so. Be a lot of discussion around recreation and, uh, sports fields, uh, rec centers, all that, that type of reopening. Not as today about restaurants and those types of things, so. Uh, we're continuing to use the resources from OBT to get the word out to the community in partnership with the county. And, uh, just still proud of the team. I think everybody's doing a great job trying to balance everyone's time to keep up to date with everything and, and the reports coming out of, uh, Dr. Joe and, you know, C group as well. But we're here to answer any questions you all might have, um, but I don't have anything other than that to mention.
Okay, Council Frank?
So, Mr. Bell, uh, is it currently still available for small businesses to apply to the city for the no interest? Five thousand, up to five thousand dollar loan?
Yeah, we still have the Small Business Relief Fund going, uh, the five thousand dollars, uh, no repayment for a year, zero percent. Uh, apply through the city website, and we've had a little over a hundred thousand dollars applied for out of three hundred thousand that was allocated for that. And then just recently at the work session, we talked about utilizing some of those funds, uh, in another capacity to help, uh, with, uh, community members to frequent restaurants and that type of thing. That's still in the preliminary stage. It'll come before council at the next regular meeting, based on info you received at the work session. But I'd be encouraged, and there's still, uh, OBT's still getting the word out on that. We still have the weekly business calls. We're going to every other week, so the business call for tomorrow has been canceled, and we'll get on an every other week rotation, I believe. If I misspeak on that, Chelsea, correct me. Uh, trying to come up with new and exciting topics for the business owners in our community has been difficult when we're brainstorming that. We don't want to be redundant and waste people's time.
So tomorrow, there is not a business call at eight-thirty. Just want to make that clear. Right, and we will, um, have the next one a week from tomorrow, which would be June tenth. Great, Council Anderson?
Yeah, excuse me, I just wanted to, uh, follow up on, uh, Councilor Frank's question to you, Bill. If a business, uh, early on got one of these loans and now we're in a difficult situation, could they apply for a second one?
I don't know the answer to that question because I honestly don't remember how we set it up. If you could apply twice, Chelsea, do you know?
We didn't specify, so I think, um, what we discussed in the early days, um, just as a discussion point was being flexible. So if we were to come upon a situation where that was needed or a situation where a business outside of the scope of our parameters needed assistance or something like that, that we would be flexible. And I think that was actually discussed in, um, a city council meeting, though not to this specific point. So I feel like if there was that necessity, that, um, the sentiment was that we could be flexible, but there's nothing in writing that says that.
Okay, well, that might be important. I just wanted to bring it up.
Great, thank you. Councilor Frank?
So to be clear, even though there isn't specific language allowing it, there also is not specific language preventing it, correct? So that other businesses have the option to come back to the city and at least make that attempt?
I think it sounds like we want to be, um, flexible and responsible on that one. Are we working with any of our local restaurants yet on their liquor licenses to amend their premises to allow sales in spaces they weren't previously allowed, like on the sidewalk or, uh, parking lot?
I have an update to that. Um, my oven timer is going off, and Lisa probably has something, so sorry for the beeping in the background here. Um, we did actually reach out, um, and call each business today or each restaurant today, and I'm going to turn it over to Lisa while I go stop this really fast.
I can't, there we go. Sorry, having a hard time, uh, unmuting. Um, we did have, uh, two requests that came into OBT, um, and forms are provided, and then today, um, I met with one of my liquor licensees who's interested, and I got an, one application by email. So we have four or five of them in different stages, but, um, none with an actual application submitted just yet.
Thanks, and yeah, sorry about that. The, with the other part that I wanted to update, is that what we're hearing from restaurants or what we heard today in the calls that we made was that they are still seeing some slower foot traffic coming in the door? So it hasn't just been gangbusters just yet. Things are a little bit slower. Um, people are, um, having difficulty wearing masks as they come in the door and stuff like that, and so maybe that's a phase that we're in, and things will pick up, and then we'll start to see more of the applications and that kind of thing, but I, I couldn't predict it. I'm not sure.
Great, thank you very much. I had a question for, um, Bill Bell. What can you tell, um, us and our community about, um, personal fireworks? If I want to set off some little fireworks in my driveway, what, what's the situation on that within city limits this year?
I touched base with, uh, Chief Rowland today, just to make sure we're on the same page with that, and, and, uh, we've we are issuing permits for fireworks sales vendors, and so we'll have the same tent set up around the community. Fireworks vendors will be able to sell fireworks for personal use. And, uh, you know, in our community, we don't allow the aerial fireworks, so it'll still be fountains and all the ground type fireworks. And people will be allowed to shoot those off in their driveways and, and on concrete areas around their homes, uh, just like they have in previous years. And the only thing that would change that is if there's an extreme fire danger and the fire district uh, were to give us last minute notice just prior to the fourth, that we were shutting that down, but that uh, doesn't happen, uh, very often, uh, if at all here in the city limits. Uh, out in the, out in the county and rural areas where there's more fire risk, that usually happens, but, but here, uh, we're still encouraging people to get together as a family, and, uh, they'll be able to hopefully have some Fourth of July activities at their residence.
Great, thank you very much for that update on, um, do we, what do we, do they have a name, personal fireworks, like, as opposed to like, I mean, what do we call those? Backyard fireworks, driveway fireworks?
I don't know, I'm making it up as I go along. Yeah, personal use for personal consumption, we can call it that. Another thing is we're working on some great ideas from council members and community, uh, residents on how, uh, Alexis and OBT can make the Fourth of July still special for the community. We talked about some of those things at other meetings, and and so, uh, we'll be excited when we finalize those details and we can put it out on social media and out in the daily press and the mirrors, so people know, uh, how they can still participate in some fun activities.
Cool. I love a summer porch decorated for the Fourth of July, so maybe that would be my personal request, something along those lines. Okay, um, any other questions for our city manager?
Yeah, Bill, uh, did you want to discuss any of the, um, possibility of baseball or some of the other recreational things that may be opening up?
Sure, I thought I hung up on you there for a minute.
I thought you had too.
So with the, uh, the new guidance that just came out today, uh, we are quickly going to start scrambling to, to allow some organized sports activities. Uh, so far, things like pickleball and tennis, cross-country golf, non-contact sports have been allowed, and that regular outdoor recreation like biking and hiking and walking. But now you can actually do some organized activities like baseball, uh, but there's a lot of stipulations on how you can do that. And so we're working with our team, uh, who's also sitting on a, uh, a school district panel with coaches from a variety of sports and the recreation district to talk about how to best message that out for the community. And we'll be getting all of that out hopefully early next week. But, uh, we can definitely, uh, start planning on a shortened baseball season, uh, where people can still have teams and, and compete against each other, but some of the rules are that you can't bring in out-of-town teams, and you can't have big tournaments that would promote, uh, people from across the state to come to your community, which is really what our competitive sports program is all about, but we also have the competitive baseball program, uh, which can be done in a, in a manner that's in compliance, so, uh, we're working on some of that. We also have the youth golf program. The golf pros from Cobble Creek, the Bridges and Black Canyon have been working together to create a junior golf program again this year, and, and, uh, knowing that some of the statewide travel is limited and, and the ability for golfers to go to tournaments across the state might be limited. Uh, they're hoping to do a local circuit where you could hit all three golf courses within our own community at various age levels to get the kids out golfing in a, in an actual program that has instruction. And, uh, and I think they're talking about a couple days or a couple weeks at each of our courses, and, and then a couple days uh, for the older kids, kind of a, uh, three, two-day sessions type tournament, something like that. So that's all still in the works and is really promising for youth golf.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, Gunnison Clamp?
Uh, Mr. Bell, do we know where we are on, uh, do we have an update for where we are on Funk Fest right now? I know it's a bit out there in August, but is there any word on that?
I'm glad you brought that up, Gunnison, because I have no idea. So thank you for putting me on the spot. Uh, appreciate that. Now, we are still out there on the horizon. We have not canceled, uh, yet. What we, we have talked about doing is utilizing local music talent rather than bringing people in from out of state or, um, to that event, so if we're able to hold that event, uh, we'll know more next month, you know, and then here in the next several weeks. Uh, if we do, we'll try to utilize local music talent, which would, uh, benefit them and also give our communities some musical opportunities. One of the things that also came out in the, the amended version of the order that I read today is, uh, concert halls and music venues are opened up, uh, sit-down movie theaters are not. And so we're now going to have to talk as a staff about the pavilion and what that means for the pavilion and some of these things, it says they're open. And some of these things, it says they're open, but it also limits the number of people. And so there's, if you can't have any people, then you can't really have the event, even though they say you can have the event. It's it's just very confusing. So as of right now, Funk Fest, I know you're a big volunteer for Funk Fest and the youth council members are. We're still hoping to have something. We also talked and I think Ann sent it out to council. We heard from a couple of council members. So I might get fired for saying this too prematurely, but we are looking with our fireworks vendor at the opportunity of having fireworks on New Year's Eve. And if we get the buy-in from council, we'll move forward with the New Year's Eve celebration for our community.
I'd be curious from our community if they prefer a New Year's Eve fireworks show or a late fall fireworks show. You know, Veterans Day is in early November. I I just, I don't know, I'd be curious if there was a good way to get the pulse of the community's feeling on that.
Well, again, even though it's really far out there and we just have to play it by ear, I think maybe although New Year's Eve is more of a, a celebration associated with fireworks, Veterans Day might work better because it wouldn't be quite as cold and maybe some people would be able to go out to different places and watch it outdoors, so.
And a lot of veterans have PTSD and hide from fireworks, so maybe that's not the right messaging either.
That that's a good point as well. Okay, any other questions for city manager Bell before I ask other department heads to chime in? Okay, we can always circle back around. But are there other department heads that have something going on that they would like to include in this? Chief Hall, I will turn it over to you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I guess, let all of you know and let our community know that I commend the rally and the members who are participating in that right now at Maiden Townsend. It's peaceful and they are exercising their First Amendment rights in relation to a really serious topic that we have in our nation right now. And and that topic is racial injustice. And I know that some of our community members have reached out and are a little bit concerned about future rallies. I know that there's one plan for Saturday. I have been, or our department has been told that it will be a peaceful rally. But we will also be staffing extra officers on that day to ensure that that's the case. And that we are also treating people fairly, respectfully, professionally. We do not want to be the the face of anger. And that that is our message to the community, that we are a police department for everyone in our community. And I think it's good to have those conversations. But it also, we can have all the conversations we want. It's up to our police administrators and our city officials to ensure that we don't hire men and women who shouldn't frankly be in this job. And the the things that I saw that happened in Minnesota with that officer was despicable. So we can talk about it, but we also have to ensure that our agencies don't hire those people. And when we see those precursors in officers, we correct it and we terminate. And so I just wanted to talk about that because it was notified by some of our officers how impressed they were with the the peaceful rally that's going on at Maiden Townsend. So I wanted to, just wanted to get that out there. So thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Any questions from council for Chief Hall while we've got him on the hot seat? Yes, Counselor Frank.
Not so much a question, as a commendation, that leadership filters down from the top. That our Montrose officers are incredibly professional, incredibly polite and respectful. And that is a direct refraction of the command staff that our Montrose PD has. And I want to thank you personally for being that leader.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for our police chief? Okay. Any other department heads have an update for us tonight? I don't see anyone turning off their microphone and jumping up and down. Okay, great, then I will move on to the next agenda item. Number 12, and that's city council comments. This means we're almost done with our meeting and we have a chance for to go around the virtual room for counselor comments before we adjourn for the evening. So in no particular order, who would like to go first with any comments?
Just a second, ma'am, if I could interject. I'm sorry, I think Harrison and I missed our cue a bit there.
You know, I don't, I don't have a youth council update on my agenda, but but you are absolutely correct, Gunnison Clamp. Thank you. Please give us a youth council update. You did not miss a cue, I I missed you, sorry.
All right, so Harrison and I'll be, we'll be sharing the presentation tonight. We'll look over for a highlight project that we we did this year. So for the first two, I'll turn it over to Harrison.
Thank you, Gunnison. So one of our first projects that we did this year was our street cleanup of the street we had adapted, which was the Miami Road from East Main to Hillcrest Drive. And we'd advertise it to high school seniors because of the community service deadline. It was very close and the deadline was almost done. And then our second biggest project that, well, our second biggest project in time that we did, going in order of how we did them, was our Rock the Recs, which our first one, we had a huge turnout for. It was Winter Wonderland themed. And it was one of our biggest Rock the Rec turnouts we've ever had. And then our second one was a sports-themed Rock the Rec. And it had different activities that were sports-themed. We had a basketball competition that did very well and different prizes. Now I'll turn it over to Gunnison.
Right, so for our other two big projects we did this year, one of them, we had a lot of big plans for, but unfortunately be, because of the pandemic, it didn't come to be. But it really, it was a really big community service project. We had planned with Habitat for Humanity for a build day, open to council members 16 and older. That was planned to be a full day on the on the job site. And a really good community service opportunity. Again, we weren't able to do that, but just the the idea behind that, the, this really, really big community service project that's going to benefit a lot of people, really, we, it was really a great mindset to have going into that. Our most recent project we did, probably wouldn't have come about if it wasn't for the pandemic, causing many, many things to go virtual, online. And that was our tutoring program. We did have several people sign up for the tutoring program. And even though the school year is over and it's unlikely we would have a lot of applicants now, the application and Michaela or Kayla, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the application is is still open to anyone who would maybe like just some way to spend time this summer, get some extracurricular tutoring. So that was, that was our biggest project online. The pandemic, we also used social media a lot with different community engagement projects. So overall, I, this was my first year on youth council and I don't think I could have enjoyed it more. It was really just a pleasure to be able to serve and also a pleasure to get to know council. I know, being on youth council, that was a big, that was really how I was able to meet all of you. So that's been a real pleasure, too.
Fantastic, thanks for that update, you guys, and thanks for reminding me that needs to be standing item on our agendas. We'll make sure that happens. It's great to have you both here tonight and I look forward to seeing you at any council meeting this summer. Any questions from my fellow counselors for our youth city counselors tonight? They're great, aren't they? You guys can just nod, yeah, okay. Fantastic. I hope we see you guys in person soon because getting to know you and your enthusiasm for serving this community is definitely infectious. It just isn't the same on Zoom. Okay, let's continue with council comments in no particular order. Who would like, would anyone like to say anything tonight? We might be meeting now, in all fairness, we've had meetings all day long today, so we might all be out of words. That's always possible. Yes, Counselor Frank.
I just think all of us condemn the brutal murder of a man in Minneapolis. And just to throw our support behind peaceful, legitimate protests, people have a constitutional right to speak out. And I just want to support the idea of a peaceful protest that's going to be held and encourage people to recognize that Montrose PD is exemplary. We don't have that happening here. So analogy I kind of thought of is blaming our PD for something that happened somewhere else is like somebody coming to your house at three in the morning and punching you in the nose because your neighbor's dog is barking. So let's just be wise, let's be smart and exercise your rights carefully. Thank you.
Good comments.
Thank you, Counselor Frank. Counselor Anderson.
Yeah, I just, I I think as I listen to Counselor Frank, just echo his comments. And thank Chief Hall for his leadership and the attitude that is conveyed by our police department to our community. It's really supportive and outstanding. The other thing I wanted to mention is our our budget meeting today, we had the first for 2021. And it was very productive, I thought. And a lot of, virtually all the staff, I think, contributed to that tremendously. And it was just a very positive meeting. And I wanted to thank our city staff for the work they put into that. That's all.
Who's next? Anybody?
I don't know anything.
Okay, then I'll wrap this up. It's not often that in one day I get to read a letter from a constituent, receive a phone call out of the blue from a constituent, answer an email from a constituent. But I think all of those prove that we would like to, as council, be accessible and available to the community. When they have questions or concerns and they want to talk to us about them, please continue to email us, to call us. If you call me and I answer, don't, don't be surprised. I get that a lot. They ask if this is the office of the mayor and I say, yeah, this is Barbara, I'm sitting here in my kitchen. What can I help you with? That's our job and that's why we step forward at some point in our city council career and and said, I want to be on city council because I want to have those conversations and I want to know what is important to you in our community. And our city staff is committed to serving the community. They work hard and really proud of their work. I'm proud of my fellow counselors and their hard work. And I think we can go forth and continue doing that. So thank you, everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tim Glassell, a second. And we're, thank you very much. And we are so, so done, we are adjourned by acclamation.
Great, you can go home now.